Good evening, everyone. This is a public meeting of the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for May 31st, 2012. I'd like to ask everyone if you plan on speaking either before, either in favor or against a petition, that you please sign in at the podium before addressing the board. Our first matter before us is under continuances. This is ZB 2012-10. The petition is a special permit under signs. The applicant is Kevin Wong. The property is located at 101 Lakeview Avenue, and the petition is to install new internally illuminated signage for a new restaurant pursuant to Section 6.3 of the zoning ordinance. We've received communication from Mr. Wong. Mr. Wong has requested that the board continue this to July 9th. With that said, I'd like to have a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to continue to July 9th.
Yes. Could I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Could I have a roll call?
Mr. Bailey?
Continue to July 9th.
Mr. Hearn?
Continue to July 9th.
Ms. Carino?
Continue to July 9th.
Mr. McCarthy?
Continue to July 9th.
Mr. Peck?
Continue to July 9th.
Okay, that matter's been continued to July 9th, and there'll be no public notice. Our next matter before us is under new business. This is ZB 2012-20. This is for a special permit under signs. The applicant is Dunkin' Donuts. Property is located at 1505 Middlesex Street. The petition is to replace existing internally illuminated signage with new internally illuminated signage for Dunkin' Donuts pursuant to 6.3 of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Hall, good evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. As you said, I represent the 1505, excuse me, Middlesex Donut, gotta be the name of my client here, Dunkin' Donut, is at 1505 Middlesex Street, excuse me. We're here to replace some existing signs. They're all standard Dunkin' Donuts signs. They've all been reviewed by the sign department and have been approved, or at least met their criteria. And the signs are a new sign, an awning over the front door, a new awning over the drive-thru, replacement of the face on the piling sign, and a new drive-thru menu board. So they're all standard. If you went by any Dunkin' Donut in the area, you'd see this, they're fancy new signs that are very striking and pleasing to the eye, and we'd ask the board to grant us permission to install these signs on Middlesex Street.
Okay. And I know in our communication we received from DPD, they had no issues-
That's right.
-with the proposal as presented. Anything else you'd like to add to that, Mr. Hall?
No, I don't.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up to the public at this point. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor. Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone like to speak in opposition? Opposition, opposition. Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Gonna open up to the board. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank the applicant on a very thorough and complete application. I think that this makes perfect sense to freshen up the appeal of the Dunkin' Donuts, and since we're well within the regulations for signage sizes, I think we should look at entertaining this as a positive investment in the retail in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Kevin?
No further comments, Mr. Chairman.
And can I have a comment, please?
I agree with what's already been said and have no other comments.
Thank you. And Mr. Peck?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that said, I also concur with all the board members, again, based on DPD's review, that there were no comments, and sometimes with signs, we have a lot of comments. So with that said, I'd like to have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the special permit for illuminated signage at 1505 Middlesex Street.
And could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Could I have a roll call?
Mr. Bailey?
Approved.
Mr. Hearn?
Approved.
Ms. Carino?
Approved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Approved.
Mr. Peck?
Approved.
Joe, does Mr. Hall need to sign anything for that? Okay. Mr. Hall, if you could just sign. This is a special permit under signs Dunkin' Donuts at 550 Bridge Street. Petition is to replace existing internally illuminated signage with new internally illuminated signage for Dunkin' Donuts pursuant to Section 6.3 of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Hall?
Mr. Chairman, I think I was away when this petition was filed by my associate, and I think through mental telepathy, that was wishful thinking that we have a drive-thru menu sign. We certainly didn't intend that, and we don't have a drive-thru, and we don't want it, so we respectfully asked this board to deny us that menu sign. And secondly, this is new construction, as I think everyone knows. The board was involved throughout this process. There's a brand-new building there with DCU, Digital Credit Union, and the Dunkin' Donuts, so these signs are brand-new. There used to be an old dilapidated gas station on the premises for well over 20 years, and we're asking for three considerations: two signs, one on the side entry door, one on the front, and then an awning over the side door. So there are three small signs, all in the Dunkin' Donuts style, as the previous one showed, and we respectfully ask the board to grant these three signs to Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, well, that's good that the mental telepathy came back, and there's no menu board sign.
None whatsoever.
Because that seemed to be the major comment back from DPD in objection to the sign, so with that said, if there's nothing else to add, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone here that'd like to speak in favor? In favor. In favor, hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone like to speak in opposition? In opposition, opposition. Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. With the exception of the menu board, I think you did a fine job on the submission. I think I wanna just compliment Dunkin' Donuts on their graphics. I think that the, if we're to grant illuminated signs with the dark background, this really is a nice way, a nice package to present to the community for graphics, and sets a great tone, I think, at that location, that street, for others to replicate if possible. I really think that this is an outstanding signage package, graphically speaking especially. So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Kevin?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I have no comments about the signs. I think they work out well for the building, just in general. The building looks great, both the Dunkin' Donuts and DCU sign. I think it was a nice project, and it looks well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. No comments.
Mr. Peck?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just excited to see something go there. I used to live in Centerville, so I'm excited that something finally going there to help revamp and enable it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Again, in agreement with all the board members, and with that said, I'd like to have a motion, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve new illuminated signs at 550 Bridge Street for Dunkin' Donuts.
Could I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Could I have a roll call?
Mr. Bailey?
Approved.
Mr. Hearn?
Approved.
Ms. Carino?
Approved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Approved.
Mr. Peck?
Approved.
Any plans to be signed? Mr. Hall, please. Okay, our next petition is ZB 2012-22. This is a special permit under signs. The applicant is Acme Sign Corp. The property is located at 211 Plain Street, and the petition is to install new internally illuminated signage for an existing tenant, Chuck E. Cheese, pursuant to Section 6.3 of the zoning ordinance. And are you Mr. Brinker?
Sir, yes, yes.
Good evening, Ms. Brinker.
Evening.
You'd like to tell us about the petition, please?
Yes, the Chuck E. Cheese tenant at 211 Plain has been in there for many years. I don't know exactly, but they've, the mall, or retail mall owner is redoing the facade. I'm not sure how much, but it looks as if it's all on that particular one building. There's multi-b buildings on the lot, so Chuck E. Cheese has removed their sign as existing, and it was, in fact, an internally illuminated sign, and we're proposing to install new signage, also to be internally illuminated.
One question I'll ask, and Joe, maybe I'll just ask it to you. As far as the actual address for Chuck E. Cheese, I see a couple of different addresses. I just wanna make sure, is it 211 Plain? Is it 209 Plain? Is it, and I think I saw even a-
Yeah, the main parcel address is under 211. Different units have numbers attached to them, so 207, 209, 213. So any notice that goes out would be under 211, because that's the main parcel ID. I guess the unit itself is under 209, so that could be where a little confusion is coming from.
Okay. So this, so 209, is that the actual address just for that unit?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Well, the, just the question was, is that the signage was, in fact, internally illuminated, the existing sign, and our proposal is to put illuminated signage back in place after the facade's complete, to include the pylons as well. There are two pylons.
Yep.
One is at the entrance to the, well, they're both in the same area, but one's big, one's small.
Correct. Well, I know when I reviewed the notes from Department of Planning and Development, when they went through it, they seemed to indicate there wasn't any major changes to the size or shape of the sign. Joe, I don't see anything in regards to the illumination. Was there anything that you wanted to add to that?
No, there were no further comments at this time, as you noted. It's utilizing existing signage that's there. The comments were just kinda looking to clarify, are those the actual spots that the signs will be, or was it just a representation? And then also, just looking to clarify the square footage of the signage, if it was greater or less than what was previously there.
Okay. All right, anything else, sir?
The new signage would be less.
Less? Okay, good, good. Again, when we talk about signs, a lot of times, we have a lot of either questions, comments, or confusion. It's good that it's smaller as opposed to larger. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public, sir, all right? Anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor. Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone here that'd like to speak in opposition? In opposition, opposition. Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Dennis, I'd like to open it up to the board.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad we're investing in signage in that location. I think that that does need to be freshened up, and I'm glad to see that we're doing that here. I'm surprised at your choice of red on the pylons versus the white. I'm glad that we have white background on the building, but the red really stands out a lot. I think that it makes it stand out a lot, which is your intent, and so, but it doesn't blend with the rest of the pylon. I'm a little curious as to, is there an intent to be completely different than the other signs on the pylon?
I imagine there is an intent. There's, in looking at all of the other locations, that's typically what they do on pylon signage.
Okay.
And it does, in fact, differentiate, so maybe that is the intent.
It does. I'm trying to get used to it, but I think it makes sense, and I think it fits well in the building, especially, I think, the building sign makes a lot of sense, so I think it's well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Kevin?
No further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
No further comments as well.
Mr. Peck?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. This must be a night of no comments with signs. Great. Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve new illuminated signing, or replacement signing, at 211 Plain Street for Acme Sign Corp/Chuck E. Cheese.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second the motion.
Could I have a roll call?
Mr. Bailey?
Approved.
Mr. Hearn?
Approved.
Ms. Carino?
Approved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Approved.
Mr. Peck?
Approved.
Okay, Ms. Brinker, you've been approved. If you could just sign a couple of documents, we'll be all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next matter before us is ZB 2012-23. The applicant is Ernest Magnus. The property is located at 1291 Varnum Avenue, and the petition is to allow an accessory structure that does not meet height and front yard set requirements pursuant to, and the rest of mine's cut off here, is it 4.4 and 5.1?
Yes, that's correct.
You don't think I read these things, do you? Okay, is the applicant here, Mr. Magnus? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name's Ed Magnus, and my dad is Ernest Magnus, Sr. He is here with us tonight.
All right.
We're here to apply for a variance for a greenhouse that we've constructed on the property at 1291 Varnum Avenue. The property was built by my dad some 60 years ago. The house was completed in '52. The land adjacent to our property was my grandfather's, and we've been harvesting and growing crops between 1251 and 1291 Varnum Avenue since that, over that 60-year time. So it's not unusual for the Magnus family to have a garden. When the property at 1290, 1255 Varnum Avenue was constructed, which is my cousin, it displaced some of the farm area, and we moved that farmland to a spot behind the house where the actual greenhouse is located now, to cover that same area where the garden was. Recently, over the last few years, my girlfriend was diagnosed with breast cancer. We've been together 10 years, and had two major surgeries, so in August and July of last year. So after doing some research, she's on a treatment program after radiation to reduce hormones in the system, and I, again, through reading, growth hormones are a big plus introduced into the diet of cancer patients. So not only was this an opportunity for me to give my father someplace to work out of the sun, but in a confined area, even into the winter months, but also to raise an organic crop, which we've never done, which we have actually growing right now. We have hundreds of tomato plants that have, that need to be transferred into the greenhouse, but we've actually have them in the garage at this point because of not having a watering system, because I didn't wanna go forward with any of the finalized portions of it. So we're asking for a variance, because when we got the building permit for the structure, it kinda fell into a greenhouse, which is sort of like a temporary structure, because the structure is and was purchased as a temporary greenhouse, and all the manufacturer's recommendations and to build it were followed explicitly. I do have a representative of the greenhouse company here tonight to talk on the construction of the project to the board. Once the sides were, the end walls were put up because of the size and shape, the inspectional services came back out and evaluated and said, geez, it really doesn't fall into a temporary structure. It needs to be into an accessory structure, and because of that, the footage was off from our dimensions originally, okay? The dimensions kinda changed after the end walls were put up. So after recommendations from the planning board and the inspectional services, we are coming here for a variance for those two dimensions. The spot where the greenhouse is put in, all of the soil that was transported there, by hand, might I add, some 20 years ago, has been removed. I've put an impervious liner and gravel bed down to meet the recommendations of inspectional services to the tune of over $4,000 between machine time and materials, to, again, meet any equipment that might be on that site, as well as the tables and things for the plants. So with your indulgence, we are here for the first time since my dad has owned this property, to ask the city for a variance for this project.
I guess I'll just ask one question during your dissertation there. You talked about a building permit. At what point did you seek a building permit?
We had put, I had had a building permit for a two-stall garage that was aside of where the planting area was.
How long ago was that, sir?
A couple, a few years before. So, and again, after they saw the size of it, and again, it's a temporary structure. It is, it is a temporary hoop house, and a lot of them, and a lot of communities, because it's a temporary hoop house, don't require a building permit for it, because it is temporary. There is, there is no, and again, I will let Andy talk about the construction. It is purchased as a temporary structure. It's a hoop house, is what it's called. It's a temporary greenhouse. So a lot of cities, including ours, and I went into research extensively, all the rules about a greenhouse, and unfortunately, our city doesn't have any set specifications in their, in their materials. And again, we spent hours researching this before we started construction and found no issues with, that we needed to address with a building permit, because, again, there was nothing in the, in the city's verbiage about a greenhouse, or a temporary greenhouse, or a hoop house. So again, it really didn't fall into one of those categories at that time, sir.
So if I looked at the existing structure today, how far into that structure did you seek the new building permit? Was it basically done, or was-
No, sir, no, it wasn't even-
Percentage-wise, was it 50%, 25%? How far into it?
10%. We had just, all we had up was the metal, the hoops. Nothing else was up at that point. We had, we had started to lay out the end walls, but it was still in the, there was no coverings. It was, it was literally wide open.
You know, do you know what, when that took place, when you got the building permit, the month and date?
I don't, I don't have it. Joe might have it.
Was it last year sometime, was it?
It was. It was probably, I'm going to say, before the winter months, because we were trying to move it along at that point to keep it from the snow load.
So fall time of 2011?
I would say sometime September, October of last year.
And was it finished up during 2011, the construction?
It's not finished now.
Okay.
We stopped, we stopped constructing it, because when inspectional services came out, when the end walls were completed, they wanted to kinda put a hold on it to see where we were gonna go at this point with the, with the variance, because the end walls I have are very thin plywood, and I'm going to face them with the same type of material that the house is faced with, with a vinyl siding that matches the decor, so it actually looks like a house, and then we'll be actually a door on it instead of a tarp. I have tarps just covering the openings right now, so we can back in soil and stuff like that, and materials, so.
Does the property line, the rear of the property line, does it run past the, I'll say where there's a lot of low-lying trees, and does your property run all the way up to the next, the next property that's on the side street?
Yes, we have almost an additional house lot-
Okay.
-that runs, that is all, that we actually left, that I left, when I, when I cut down the trees, I actually left all of the flourishing trees, so that the greenhouse, right now, can't be seen from the next, from the next piece of property. I went to the next-door neighbors last night, and you can't see it, because we've, I've left all of that foliage there. I didn't destroy any of that, and we own that next piece of property, so there's quite a distance between our property and the next house, and the next nearest of butter, which is hundreds of yards away.
Okay. Anything else you wanna add, sir?
No, I can honestly say that this piece of equipment is a, is not an inexpensive thing that somebody has to worry about. During the course of inspectional services issuing the permit, Robert and I went over many variables on this. Because it is a temporary structure, I was required to provide him some kind of sophisticated system that he could count on for anchoring it, because it is not, it is not cemented in any portion. So I was required to meet that criteria. I found a very unique system that the Army uses for holding helicopters and airplanes down in typhoon areas, called an earth anchoring system, which ran us in about an extra $600 for the materials and the equipment, which actually now have increased the strength load of these units ever being, because they were concerned that if one of the doors opened, that if in a large-scale wind, if the thing would take off like a, like a parasail. Again, it weighs, it weighs, it has some extensive weight because of the 2 1/4-inch steel square rafters, or the hoops, but also now with this sophisticated system, the four corners have an eight-inch earth anchoring head that have been driven into the ground three feet with a 5/8 cable that actually lock it onto the legs of the house to keep it contained. So we've met those. Also, the recommendations from the inspectional services was to give them data on the materials being used to cover the house. It is all plastic. It is removable. Matter of fact, the sides will be coming off as soon as, as we can complete finishing up, so, so that we can actually have, not, it runs about 120 degrees right now during the day, so it's way too hot for us, so I've gotta, you know, get working on the irrigation part of it, and also the, getting the sides off, so that we don't have to worry about the rodents getting in there, and we do have, believe it or not, on out of Varnum Avenue, we have wildlife, lots of woodchucks, so, and they love baby plants, so.
So you're saying, the structure, if I look at it today, that's gonna be the finished product? That's exactly what it's gonna look like?
No, sir. The sides will be sided to match the house with a vinyl siding. There'll be a door, a complete door, not a tarp hanging off of it. The grade along the sides is almost done. We need to finish that, but again, because if I'm gonna move it, I've kinda had to stop, you know, we've put the stop, the presses on at this point, so.
You mentioned data from DPD. Joe, did this gentleman receive the comments from DPD?
I believe Mr. Magnus did receive the memo that the board received, and was posted on the city's website.
Okay. So, Mr. Magnus, I'll ask you this. Did you read, did you read through their comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they, they talked about requiring you to provide a plot plan with the following additional elements. Did you review that?
Well, yes, those were on the other comments. I mean, if anything-
Okay, so do you have anything that you're submitting tonight that- So do you have anything that you're submitting tonight that meets those requirements?
No.
Okay.
No, they didn't, they said, um, that these were general notes, I only got them a few days ago.
Okay.
I literally got these maybe two days ago.
Okay.
So I've, I've researched them, a lot of them are suggestions and comments, um, they're not mandatory. I mean, the final grade of the, um, the area, like I said, um, is, is set. Unfortunately, uh, the one-foot variance, um, for the height is because the contractor, when he was taking the loam out, uh, ran into a couple stumps and we had to, uh, dig those out and grind them out. And, and because of that, um, the grade was supposed to be sixteen foot because there's some, we ran into some ledge when we were putting the legs in. So, I mean, I can change the grade. The grade can be changed with, you know, a few truckloads of gravel and we can, we can get, you know, a sixteen-foot, you know, height requirement. It seems, you know, kind of moot at this point to do that until we find out if I have to move the, the structure back eight feet.
Yep. Now, did you say the data wasn't required?
I never, never said that.
Okay. So, uh, because it is, and that's why I wanted to ask the question. I thought somewhere along the line you made a comment that it wasn't required. And those are the comments we received from the city that there's certain data elements that we need to receive or should have received in order to evaluate this. And if you only received this a couple of days ago, I can understand if you just had a chance to review it and you don't have anything here tonight. I'm just asking the question, was there anything else you wanted to additionally submit?
No, I mean, we've looked at a lot of the things, you know, about the neighborhoods and, and the single zoning areas and, you know, on Vannam Avenue. And, and again, if anybody has, uh, been to the property, um, it, you know, this letter from the city states that, you know, that they would like to see the unique characteristic of, of the little neighborhoods, um, preserved. If you stand at twelve ninety-one Vannam Avenue, you will see almost every, um, type of, uh, unique characteristic. We go from, uh, if you turn around and you look in the backyard, we have a greenhouse, a swimming pool and trees. Lots of trees and, um, uh, our neighbors have, you know, a quiet area. My cousin next door has a, you know, thirty-eight-foot camper, you know, mobile home parked next to his house with a garden twenty yards away from it with a gravel pit next to it. If you stand and you look to the front, Westminster Village, which is literally not even twenty yards from our driveway, is a multifamily apartment building with a parking lot with cars parked on it and cars parked on a lean street on a daily basis. So to, you know, to fall into the unique characteristic of, of the neighborhood, um, you know, the land has been farmland. There is a farm, um, not two-tenths of a mile, um, to the right of twelve ninety-one Vannam Avenue. There is farmland at the bottom of the, uh, Boulevard Street, a large farm, um, that is, is planted right now. So the characteristic of the neighborhood goes from single families with, um, plastic garages to apartment buildings, to a bus stop, to a major thoroughfare, to the vocational school. So the characteristic, um, of the neighborhood is not being changed or jeopardized in any way by adding a greenhouse. Raleigh's Farm, which is two-tenths of a mile from our house, has nine or ten greenhouses that are closer than twenty-five feet to the street, as well as, uh, farm equipment and, 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 and. So I think the unique characteristic of the, uh, the neighborhood with the purchase of a professional, um, piece of equipment, um, that is a, a class piece. It's not a piece of, uh, of garbage, it's well constructed. I think Joe will tell you that even Robert mentioned how well, after he inspected the inside, how well it was constructed.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add, sir?
No, sir, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public at this point. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor? Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Sidkovich, I live at thirty-one Alene Street. Uh, I'm diagonally across from the structure. My house is actually tilted so it faces it. Right now, the trees are up, trees are pretty full. I can't really see it from my house, I only see it when I drive down the street. Mr. McNess has said he's gonna side it similar to his house. He's growing some vegetables in there and I think in the winter he probably stores his boat and whatnot in there. I have no issue with it. I think it lines up with his, uh, above-ground pool that's been there for many years. It's the same distance from the street. There are no sidewalks in our street. So I just want to say I'm in favor of it, I, I don't have a problem with it, um, with the setback right now.
So sir, is, are you the, uh, abutter right behind?
I'm diagonally across from it on, on Alene Street, so...
So if you're going up Alene, are you on the right or the left? I just want to make sure.
On the right side.
Okay, so you're the first house on the right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you just make sure you sign in with your name and address, please? Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak, uh, in support?
Hi, my name is Andy Karen and I work for Griffin Greenhouse Supplies in Tuxbury, Mass.
Okay.
Which I sold at the greenhouse. And when he came in that day to buy one, he was all happy, he was like a little kid that he wanted to grow plants and grow vegetables and everything else. And, uh, we had a good time in the showroom talking to him and stuff, it was real, you know, fun. He's a funny guy. And, uh, wanted to know what he wanted and, you know, how big and everything else. So I did give him a quote and I did give him, uh, all the information that he, that, you know, that he would need in his head and everything else and, you know, it's a... It's, and the greenhouse business is considered a temporary structure. It's not a permanent one 'cause it's not concreted into, you know, all the poles are just driven into the ground. And what he did, 'cause I came over quite a few times, I live in Drake. So I come over and I give my hand telling him what to do the next step and stuff 'cause I have all the knowledge about building them. So, um, and when he said that he needed, um, anchoring and stuff like that, I looked at the anchor and I went, boy, this thing ain't gonna go no place. Especially if being driven into the ground that he driven. I even, I even helped him put him into the ground, they're really, they're in there, that place ain't going no place. Uh, so, it's a wonderful greenhouse and it's like, next thing is gonna be roll-up sides to take the sides off and let some air in for ventilation. And right now he does have a order pending with me on a, uh, on a gas heater, to heat it for the winter coming up. Um, I don't know if you have any questions for me about the structure?
Sure, I'll ask your question.
Okay.
How many, uh, greenhouses have you seen sited?
I'm gonna say, well, I mean, compared to thousands that we sell.
Sure.
Uh, maybe ten percent.
Okay.
That they really do a good job on them and make them look like, like a house, if, depending on the situations. You know, a lot of them will just put plastic on the end walls, which, that doesn't last too long. Then it looks like heck. You know, when it starts falling apart and blowing around and stuff and being, being, uh, plywood that he has right now and stuff and then if he's putting siding on it, it'll definitely be a nice plus to the, to the greenhouse, looking beautiful, yep.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
I guess I'm all done if you don't have any more questions.
Well said, sir.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else like to speak, uh, in support? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Gail Bartlett and I live at thirteen hundred Vannam Ave., which is across the street from, um, this proposed project. Twelve years ago, we purchased this home and I am absolutely in love with my house. I'm fortunate to have a home and I hope that it will be the last one that I ever live in. It's my plan anyway. I have not, I do not have a problem with looking out my window and seeing the structure that has been, um, built by the McNess family. I have a direct view of it, I don't believe that it is, um, ugly. I think it's well constructed, it's put together neatly and it's not unsightly to, to view. Um, I do look forward to seeing it finished. I believe that it would probably add to, um, the look and then the intent of what he is trying to take and do. I'm a strong advocate for persons who use holistic approaches and alternate methods of trying to take and stay healthy or become healthy. So I believe that this greenhouse is going to answer those needs. I think that that's a wise, a wise choice on their part. And I'd also like to address the, the, the culture and the characteristic of the neighborhood. It is a very, very different neighborhood, we don't have any houses that are the same. So I don't believe that this would impede on what, what we have in existence because it's a different, it's a different neighborhood. And I don't, I'd like to see it finished. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Say your name.
My name is John McCarty. Uh, we've been, excuse me, one oh one three oh one, Barnum Avenue, two hundred and, Barnum Avenue. And, so dropping that. I think the house, uh, fender is about, uh... And I was looking at the house, the, the house, and I, this house is not the, that I need to get, uh, that done, that's a house that's about, uh... And...
What do you think about it?
Crazy. But...
John and I share a home.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Just to interpret briefly, at the risk of remaining his, given his dignity, um, he lives at thirteen hundred Vannam Ave., we share a home. And aside from telling me I'm crazy, which is what he just did, but, um, he's telling you that he wants to see it finished, that's what I hope to say.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Anyone, anyone else like to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Ernie McNess Junior and I live at twelve ninety-five Vannam Avenue. And I am the closest abutter to this property. And I feel this, this would be beneficial to allow him to, to do this, not only for the health reasons, but also I'm a cancer survivor too and I can plant my, my garden in there also. So I, I approve of this plan.
Okay, sir, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor, in favor, in favor? Yes, sir.
I'm Ernie McNess Senior. I'm the old man of the crowd. I'm eighty-eight years old, going on eighty-nine. I've lived in that property since nineteen fifty-two. And when I moved up there, I had six acres of woodland. My in-laws gave me, gave my wife that we cleared by our hands to build a house. And we built, uh, a home there. My son has built a home next door, I gave him some land. And I spent a couple of years of the service over in the islands and I did my duty over there and I came home and built a house. We, uh, decided when I retired, the boys and I, that they really didn't want to do anything with that property in the backland 'cause they had about six acres altogether. So we took it and figured, well, the city's not gonna get any money out of it. Only give a thousand dollars a year from, from me and taxes and, and woodland and old junk land. So I had somebody come in and we took and we, uh, put a project in there and he put, uh, twelve houses in there, which is giving the city a lot of money. Personally, I've been living now on that land now for, since nineteen fifty-two. That's sixty-odd years. I pay my taxes every year. I own the property and it just bothers me that I have to come down here and beg to use five or six feet of my land because it didn't quite happen to fall into some category. Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone here like to speak in opposition? Opposition? Yes, sir.
My name is John Hamblett, four nine five Vannam Avenue. I'm co-chair of the Pawtucketville Citizens Council and representing the council this evening. Uh, we've been asked by residents of the neighborhood to speak against the request for a variance. Three required findings have to be reached in the affirmative for granting a variance. And the courts have ruled that a failure to establish any one is fatal. Finding one is the soil shape or topography. The finding implies that there's something wrong or unusual that is evident in the soil, the parcel shape or the topography. No such evidence has been produced. Therefore, the request for a variance does not meet the finding of soil, shape, or topography. Finding number two is hardship and there is no question that the applicant bears a personal hardship. But Massachusetts courts have held that hardship must relate to the premises for which the variance is being sought. Massachusetts courts have routinely rejected personal hardships as meeting the hardship test. The variance is being requested for a self-created hardship. The building was built too high and too close. Self-created hardships are consistently met with a hostile view by the courts. Therefore, the request for a variance does not meet the second finding. Finding number three is the public good. The third finding is the most subjective, but the applicant has not demonstrated how the structure contributes to the public good. He has demonstrated how it contributes to the personal good. Therefore, the request for a variance does not meet this finding. Given, given this information, we reaffirm, we request variance not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is TJ McCarthy, reside at thirty-seven Alene Street. Just for locality, uh, my house faces, uh, directly upon this, uh, particular structure. I just wanted to have an opportunity to speak to some of the merits of comments that were, uh, spoken here tonight as well as, uh, the appeal filed here, uh, with the commission. You know, understandably, there was a heritage of Pawtucketville for a long time ago, fifty years ago, for, for farming. That, that is not taking place anymore. There's less and less of that, it has become a residential neighborhood, uh, to the tune of, of thousands of people now living there in, in various structures. Not a lot of structures have a thousand-foot greenhouse, um, that now apparently tonight is gonna have siding on it. I think most people, even the farm down the street, the size of this structure is absolutely enormous within the neighborhood characteristic in, in and of itself. It is, really looks like an airplane hangar. You know, I, I understand, uh, the, the, the personal hardships, again, and, and I empathize with those. And I think everybody would like to eat more healthy these days. But most people have to go to the moolahs to get those things or have small gardens in their backyard and I think everyone should be encouraged to do that. But it, it, this structure is, lends, or begs the question of, soon down the road, will we start having a road stand next to the, the enormous amount of food that could potentially be, be grown in a structure of this size? Uh, again, uh, hitting, really to the heart of the character of the neighborhood, degrading it even further. The other reality of this is, since December, uh, it has been used not as a garden bed, as a garage. It's been used as a garage to house jet skis, boats, and cars. Uh, this property is, has had history of this in the past with unregistered vehicles. And, uh, I, I think that, that's something else that really needs to be, uh, taken into consideration. Um, I, and again, uh, another thing tonight that keeps being thrown out is that this is a temporary structure. I, I don't see the structure going away. This is a massive structure, there's not gonna be taken down every winter. This is here to stay, it's going to be sited. Uh, this is, and it just, again, does not fit the character of the neighborhood. On the map that was submitted with this plan, if you see next to Alene Street, that is, that's the primary area of where you need a, a variance to. In essence, the doorway faces Alene Street. The only way to access the boats and cars and other things that have been kept in the structure is actually onto Alene Street, creating a second entryway onto the property. And I know some people that, that would probably like a second entry to their property. But it, again, this is a residential neighborhood, everyone, uh, pretty much everyone except in the condominiums has a driveway. Everyone, pretty much everyone except the condominium has a driveway, one driveway to go in there. This structure has created, to access this structure, you need a secondary. It's not paved, but it's, it's compacted, stone dust that has been graded mechanically and is, is allowing boats to be towed and jet skis to be towed on and off here. And lastly, just a couple of small points. The proximity to this, I know it may not be germane to the jurisdiction of this particular board, but there may be secondary issues, electrical issues, having a pool as in close proximity to, to the structure of itself. And lastly, I just want to go on, on record thanking DPD, Cameron Amaral, and Adam Backey have been very responsive to the neighborhood group, but I just want to go on record thanking them. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? 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 Yes, ma'am.
I'm Deb Ford, I'm the chairman of Pawtucketville Citizen Council, and I'm just really going to make a simple statement, because whenever you're asking people to come up for or against, what I'm against is variances in zoning. When the, if there's no remedy at all for him to be able to change the setback, then I could see a variance. But I believe that it can be, the, he can meet the requirements. If it's a temporary structure, then it could be moved eight feet back, and the height could be changed. What we're against as a neighborhood group is each time you move the bar, that if there's a variance on this house and a variance on that house, you start to have a neighborhood that has variances, and then you start to find, where is the line? It becomes very blurry on what is allowed and what isn't. So, it just doesn't seem to be a hardship that it can be moved. So, what I'm asking is if you could just stay to what's required for setbacks and heights, it's really going to help the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? 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 Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is closed. Going to open up to the board. Dennis.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions on the structure itself. If I could just have the person that represents the company that, that structure is from answer a couple of questions? Thank you. I've heard a lot about this building being defined as a temporary structure. And so, I'd just like to understand, when I look at the zoning bylaws, there's discussion in here about permits may be renewed by the commission, but it says not more than for one year each, and not more than a total of three years. So, it kind of defines temporary structure for permitting standpoint, it seems like relatively short period of time. What's the expectation for this structure? Is it, when I hear siding especially, and what's the expectation? Is it, is it more permanent than three, four, or five years?
Usually, in, in the greenhouse industry, anything that is being banged into the ground, a ground post like, like Ed's, or, or even if it's a round pipe greenhouse, is considered a temporary, because you can take it down and move it away. If it's concreted into, you know, if it's, the posts are concreted in, in ground, then it's really hard for you to, in the greenhouse business, it's not, it's considered permanent. It's not a temporary structure now, because then you would have to try to rip it out of the ground with concrete around it, and it's not that easy to take down and move it away. Or if you want to take it from here, you want to take it down, move it over here, any place you want to do it.
When I think of a temporary structure, I think of the longevity of the materials as really determining the nature of the structure, like whether it's fabric or something, the Mylar plastic that you're using, is it, what, what is the material that you have?
Yeah, he has, he has regular polyethylene.
Yep.
Which is, you know, that is usually in the greenhouse business, that's probably at least a good ninety percent of greenhouses are covered with polyethylene.
Yep.
And that's usually the roof and the sides and...
And what will you see, get a couple of seasons? How many years would you get out of that material?
On, on the polyethylene that we sell is usually a four-year polyethylene. It's guaranteed for four years from the sun breaking it down, the UV inhibitors into the polyethylene.
And that's probably the most delicate material that you have of the structure. Everything else is, other than the foundation, it doesn't really have any concrete, just have...
Right. You know, if, if it had, uh, polycarbonate panels on the structure...
That would be a more permanent...
Then that would be at least more permanent, because, I mean, you could still take it down and move it away, but when you're talking hundreds of dollars per panel and stuff, you don't want to do that, because you'll never get it back in the same spot again.
Okay. Okay. I think I understand it. Thank you very much.
Okay. You're welcome.
And I just want to get a little bit more of a history as to how it got built to the level that it's at. Did, if I could just ask, you met with the city officials, inspection services?
I did.
And reviewed the plan?
Correct. And I, and I gave them a, an outline of the plan. I have, I have drawings here, all the mechanical drawings for the, for the plan in her entirety. I went over them with Robert and Mark and Kathy at different times in inspection services. Again, we, we looked at different variations of constructing it as to the legs. Robert was mostly concerned with the legs of it.
If I could just interrupt, I just want to establish that you met with the inspection services rather than all the details.
I met with them.
Was it established at that point that it was a temporary structure?
Again, because there's no real definition for greenhouse, or temporary greenhouse in the articles, again, I think it, everybody felt that this was a temporary structure at that point. Again, not only till after I put the sidewalls up. And again, only the sidewalls are the pieces that are going to be finished. They can be put in plastic, but unfortunately aesthetically, it really looks like crap.
And I, I agree a hundred percent with the sidewalls being done correctly, and I think it's better for the neighborhood especially...
Absolutely.
To treat it, so, in a, that's consistent. I agree.
And to address the, the soil issue, I, I made an agreement with the inspection services with a, a court, we went to, because of some issues that we were having with vehicles on the property. I'm in the auto industry. I, I'm an instructor at Franklin Institute of Technology in the automotive department. And on occasion, people will donate vehicles, and I will appraise them at my, at my home before I transport them into the school for students to, to work on and evaluate. We did have a situation where some citations were issued for vehicles, for trailers specifically. And, and Joe can attest to this, we, we went to a hearing with the clerk magistrate. Proof of registration was shown for the vehicles. Just because there were no stickers, current stickers on the plates, the assumption that they were illegally there came to light. So, there's a misnomer of that. So, and the grade was, agreement was to remove the earth there and to put down a impervious barrier and surface and, and put the gravel there. That was an agreement that I made with inspection services with the court's approval.
I'm just curious as to why, because if it's defined as a temporary building, it clearly says that the commissioner of buildings may grant a permit for a temporary building or use incidental to the building development which does not comply with the provisions of this ordinance. Does that mean that they can grant a permit that doesn't meet finite setbacks?
Typically, with a temporary structure, you might have something that's normally around for a weekend to, up to six months.
It says here, Joe, not to exceed a total of three years.
I'm just saying normally what you see with a temporary structure, and we require a permit for a temporary structure. For this particular instance, the building commissioner in his review of it, he looked at the materials and whether or not it had a foundation, and he, based on his determination and the longevity of the structure being longer than two years, even a six-month and then a, a year renewal, it would, based on materials, it would last longer than that. So, based on that, he saw it as a permanent structure rather than a temporary structure.
So, we can't fit it into temporary structures? And we have to define it as a permanent structure? So, we have to be viewing this in the light of a permanent structure?
Correct. Based on the building commissioner's interpretation.
Wow. I mean, that's, that's, that's a different light, I think, if we're starting to see this as a permanent structure. Then I, I think that the, the gentleman that spoke to the, the requirements for variance has a great point, that we, I, I see a hard time at defining this as a temporary structure and providing a variance. It's a significant degradation, I think, to the zoning to go for a relief of thirty-five percent of the setback.
Six, six feet.
I know, but the whole setback's only twenty-five feet, I think?
Twenty-five feet, correct.
Yeah, it's a big percentage of the setback that you're asking for. And I know it's only a corner of the building, but still...
It is only one corner of the building...
I understand that.
Because of the, the way the road, the road actually turns. It's not the whole building. One side of the building meets the criteria, thirty-five feet from it. The other corner is the only point.
If I, if I were you, I would be so upset that the city has gone so far with you...
Well, again, this, this is why I'm here. I mean, I, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of labor, a lot of hot sweat and blood. I didn't hire, I mean, when the city came up and they were like, oh, did you hire a crane to put this stuff up? You know, I had guys on a, on a step ladder in the back of a pickup truck, you know, hauling steel girders and putting this stuff up to, to, to put, to construct this. I mean, it was, it was done physically, the old style way. We built this truly by hand. This is a hand-erected piece of equipment. It's, it's as, as solid as anything you can get. I'm, I'm educated, and again, I, I teach on, on the level. I've been with Franklin for over five years as an instructor in their automotive department. I'm certified, I have, again, by ASE, I have a mass appraisers license for the auto industry. I've kept all these through the year, even though I'm not in that business anymore. And so, this, this project was well thought out, was well laid out. Every, I mean, I addressed, I dotted every I and every T so that this would not be a piece of crap.
I think it works for a temporary structure.
So...
But the fact that it's being defined as a permanent structure and it can't fall into the temporary structure category, even though it's a plastic roof and doesn't have concrete footings, it's being called a permanent structure.
So, and the sides will be taken off every summer. The sides will be rolled up. Most of it will be ventilated over the summer months. So, half of the building, half of the, the footage of the plastic will be removed every summer. So, I mean, if anybody would like to see on the board, I have actually pictures of the neighborhood. And, and again, I, this is yesterday and the day before. If anybody would like to see these of the neighborhood and the, the farmland that's actually available still within two-tenths of a mile of our property. So, if anybody wants to say that the neighborhood structure or integrity is being changed, I mean, I have these pictures here that show, you know, numerous growing areas within two-tenths of a mile either way of, of the 1291 property.
Anybody on the board would like to see the pictures? Yes, if you could present it to them, sir.
I think I just want to make one last comment, that as a permanent structure, I think we have to honor the setback. As a temporary structure, which it seems that it's closer to a temporary structure than a permanent structure, I, I don't see that, why we would be, but, but I understand we're looking at it not as a temporary structure. So, I'm, I'm really stuck with that whole setback issue being violated for a permanent structure. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Kevin.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I echo Dennis's words as far as that degradation between a permanent and non-permanent structure. To me, it looks like a permanent structure as well, so I see where it's coming from. Obviously, the way you're explaining how it was put together lends itself, itself to its, a pretty rugged system. So, I just, I actually have a list of questions just for clarification more than anything. Who currently, is somebody living full-time on, on the property now? Is it yourself or your father?
My father and I, yes.
Both of, okay. All right. How about, I guess, what I'm struggling with is the, the square footage, and how did you come up with such a large need for, for a system?
That's, that was where the garden was. That was the same size as, as our planting area.
What's the height, what is the height of the unit?
The height of it's only sixteen, it's supposed to be sixteen feet. When we were, when we were putting the legs in, we ran into ledge. There's some ledge back there. And because the grade, when they, when they dug out the stumps and things, they changed the grade. It actually, you can see the pool grade is about, almost a foot different than the grade of that area. But because the impervious liner was already down, we had to kind of settle with that grade and, and feather it back into the sides.
Okay. So, what is that?
So, the, so the building is seventeen feet. Now, it looks taller because it's filled with air. There was a piece of sheet of plastic that's full of air, okay? And that's how the system works to keep the elements from caving the unit in, in, okay? In, in, in bare condition.
It does look taller. That's my...
So, if you look at it, that's where the, the, the issue comes in, because that plastic, when it's hot now, can stretch almost three feet.
Okay.
Okay? But the actual rafters are just, just on, just over sixteen and three-quarter inches. So...
Steel, and it sits maybe three feet above that.
Correct. So, that could be changed. Again, I could put gravel down. I could, you know, extend the, the ridge boards on the side, another, another run, and, and put another foot of gravel down. That's, that's not the issue. Moving the end walls now that they're, they're bolted in is, is, is a job.
Yeah.
It's, it's higher, now it's higher a crane, because to disassemble, somebody's going to get hurt. So, I would have to hire a crane, and I could move, I can move it eight feet. That's not the issue. The issue is, is that, you know, we're, we're encroaching on a sidewalk that will never be put there. Okay? The land, you know, has been used for that same purpose for sixty years. We're not changing...
Yeah, it's more the structure. I mean, it's eight thousand cubic feet.
It's, it's a, it's a structure that we, that I, I built because of, it was the most inexpensive way to do something like this, to actually have a place that we could grow and have almost a year-round crop. If we can, if we heat it, then we could actually grow, you know...
How does the height play a factor on that, though?
What's that, sir?
I don't understand how the height plays a factor, and, and I assume you're growing at, at ground level. I don't understand why it needs to be so tall.
That's the manufacturer's specifications. Again, I, I'm, I didn't lay it out, but it was supposed to be sixteen feet, and because of the way the grade changed, and we ran into some ledge, okay? The, the legs didn't get driven down as, as far as we wanted them to on a couple spots. So, to keep it symmetrical and to keep it...
So, ventilation-wise, it needs to be that tall for those, for those reasons?
It gets pretty hot. Like I said, the other day, it was 120 in there, and, and I'm having to, you know, really rip the, the sides off, off of it right now and again. But if I have to move it, then, you know, it's, it's a construction project. I can't, I'm waiting...
I'm just curious why it's not, I mean, if you go by the farm that you referred to, that their greenhouses are eight feet, ten feet tall?
Some of them are. Some of them can be hired depending on, you know, the sunlight, because again, you're looking for the most, most concentration. A small greenhouse, you're very, you're...
That's what I'm asking. Is it necessary to be that tall because of what?
Where this one is, it's the way the sunlight comes around it. It only comes around one, the front's one side of it. So, you really do need as much sunlight, because plants, especially tomato plants, really require a lot of, a lot of sunlight and heat.
Yeah.
So, that, that building is the way it's, you know, situated geographically, the sun only hits it during the afternoon hours. So, you have to maximize your sunlight exposure.
Okay. It just, I mean, it's a big unit, seventeen hundred square feet by twenty feet?
It's the area that, again...
Looks taller, twenty feet, to me.
It does, and if you want to come inspect it, again, I'd love to show it to you. It's...
The drive-up doors, what are they, twelve feet, fourteen feet?
The doors, no, ten, nine foot wide by ten.
Yeah, they look tall.
And again, that's a standard door. I went with...
Hit them on both sides for...
For ventilation during the summer months.
Drive-up, okay.
Yeah, they go, they go up in the summer, absolutely. And then, and what you do is you put a, like a fencing system along the side so that the rodents, and along the side of the building so that the woodchucks and that don't get in.
Okay. Do you know what the distance is between the, the pool, for whatever reason, wasn't on the plot plan that we had? Do you know where that sits in relation to the, to the greenhouse?
It's, it's on the house side...
Where it sits? I mean, as far as footage between the two?
There's, there's at least eight, if not ten, feet.
Eight, ten?
Yeah, yeah. There's more than enough room to, to drive, you could actually, you can drive a truck through there. We, we did that for two reasons. A, I didn't, because of a unit like this, in the winter months, you have to snowball the sides of the, of the unit. Okay? So, so we've made it so that it's, there's enough room for the snow load to come down and for, and to be able to remove the snow.
It's not pressing against the...
Again, that was taken into consideration on the layout, sir.
Mm-hmm. The anchoring system, I know you said that you, you researched it. I'm just wondering, obviously with the doors open, you mentioned gus, I've seen tents, things of that nature.
We probably will never see a storm in our lifetime with enough wind to fill that all at one time, long enough to even, to get it to come out. But the anchoring system I have is called an earth anchoring system. They're called military earth anchors. You can look them up.
Is there any certification as far as installation, or, I know you say there's no storm, but there was no storm that was going to flood Pawtucketville?
These units, the smaller, three-inch ones, have over twenty... These units, the smaller three-inch ones have over twenty-five hundred pounds of pull strength. The larger eight-inch ones, because they didn't have any six-inch ones, so I bought, because I, because again, because of time and meeting the requirements, I actually bought a two-inch larger, um, unit, which is eight inches from point to point down in, that sink, that sunk into the ground, uh, thirty-six inches with a five-eighths cable to come up, which will hold, um, I think, twenty-two thousand pounds of, of direct.
How they're anchored, they're just driven into the ground?
They're, they're called an earth anchor. They're, they look like an arrowhead.
Okay.
Okay? In the middle of them, there's a, um, cable system that's built in. So you drive the unit into the ground and you tug on it and the, and the unit goes sideways, and now that hole width diameter of the unit is now under, under the earth, almost like a, a manhole cover that you, you know, you're trying to pull up that's, that's covered with dirt.
Hmm, okay.
So it becomes like an, they're, they're called military earth anchors.
And I guess I know the answer, but they were installed to manufacturer's specifications?
We rented a, uh, an electric jackhammer, um, and Andy can attest to this. I had a gentleman on the tailgate of my truck with the jackhammer on it, with a large, heavy, um, steel pole, that we drove them into the ground, um, thirty-six inches.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like a pretty elaborate anchoring system.
Well, again, that, that was one of Robert's main concerns, was, was that, that concern, and, and again, I addressed that.
It looks like a, a balloon, yeah. I mean, for lack of better.
I, I understand, but it, you know.
Yeah.
I, I've tried to accommodate, um, inspectional services with, uh, with, with all of their, um, requirements through the process. I have not once, uh.
Well, they would have better knowledge of it than I do as far as the safety of it, so.
Right. So I mean, again, anytime they've asked me to, to come up, uh, or come in to discuss issues or meet them to look at it, I, I've been available. I've made myself available. Um, I've made every, uh, attempt to give them proper documentation before we instituted any portion of it, um, so that they were well-informed, uh, as I went along with the project. This was not something that, you know, pull a rabbit out of your hat thing.
Okay. Um, you had mentioned potentially heating it in the future, what's the intent there?
Uh, you can extend your growing season into December.
Okay. So just gas-fired?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Running, so you're running gas somehow out to that unit?
Um, you can run them on, on a small propane tank.
Okay.
They make them very efficient. You only need to keep the, um, the night temperature above sixty for plants.
Greenhouse, okay.
Again, um, most greenhouses are not year-round because of the heating cost. But, um, this type, if you can keep the, uh, the night temperature at sixty, the sun heats the building by thirty degrees in the minute that it starts to get exposed to it. So, uh, in the afternoon hours, so you just really need to maintain a sixty-degree temperature to, you know, which is to keep the chill off of it.
And you can do that with small propane-type heaters?
I have not yet, I.
No, your opinion is that you could?
Um, the one, it's, it's, I, I, you can. I, Andy, um, he wonders if you could heat a unit like that with a propane heater.
Well, I mean, you referenced a small propane, seventeen hundred square feet, a, a large house.
Right. But again, you're only taking the chill off. You're not heating it to eighty degrees.
I don't heat my house to eighty degrees either, so, okay.
And it's pretty tight. I mean, like I said, you know, when you walk in it, it's, it's sealed pretty tight. It's, it's pretty a-tight.
It's not insulated, there's none of that.
It's not, but it's insulated within itself.
Okay.
Okay?
I know that's the intent of obviously greenhouse.
There's two layers of poly. One, you know, and again, any type of, uh, window, double-pane window that you buy, um, has air or gas put in between it. This has air in between the two upper panels at all times to keep it, to keep it atonant and to keep it, uh, insulated.
Mm-hmm.
So yes, it is insulated, and the sides are double, instead of single, uh, they actually are double poly also, uh, for the winter, to keep the, again, to keep the, uh, the cold at a minimum at that point, when we, if we can get there, you know, that, down the road.
Okay. Yeah, that just caught me, it's kind of odd.
It's a unique project.
Lastly, I mean, you have a large piece of property. Why, I know, I know you mentioned the garden was pretty much in that square footage, but why was it, why there, or just because it was there?
It's identically symmetrical with the pool.
Identically symmetrical.
There's a pool in the backyard.
Right.
And so that the, the backyard didn't look, and again, I'm, you know, I'm probably, I'm probably pretty anal on this part. I, I wanted the backyard to look balanced. I didn't want it to look out of place in conjunction to the pool, so we laid it out in alignment with the pool. And that's, that's exactly why it's there. It runs literally symmetrical with the, with the.
Yeah, I usually get a forty thousand square foot lot if it would have been better off.
But then I would have had to remove some of the tree line, which shades it from the, uh, adjacent, um, property, which is on a lean street.
Yeah.
And again, we've spoken, the neighbors have spoken with him, and he is not opposed to this at all. John, um, was, was in favor of it. He couldn't make it here tonight, but he is, uh, showing his approval also, and he is the next of butter to the property, uh, with my brother.
On the other side, on Varnum Ave?
Right, right behind, right across the street from Rich Sikowitz's house.
On a lean street, okay.
John Manny Atakas. He's, he's the, the, a true butter, and he is, he has no issue with this at all.
Okay. I mean, I, I drive up there fairly regularly. Uh, I have family up beyond, a little bit beyond Raleigh's Farm and stuff, so I'm up there twice a week, probably. I, I start going up, it's, it, it's overwhelming, honestly, on the property, as far as the house is a single, maybe with a dorm or a single floor with a dorm above.
No, it's a two fam, it's a two-family house with.
Two-story, you mean?
Two-story house, yeah. And then they, and it's dwarfed by the house, and the, uh, and the house is literally almost double the size of the, uh, of the greenhouse.
Yeah, it's a longer, I, I, to me, looking at the structure, it, it's significant.
Again, you, you only look at it from, from one spot as you go, absolutely, your perspective from that.
Right, well, you see it more from one side coming up north.
Right, your perspective is you see it from a little shed that's there on the property, and it looks, it looks huge.
Yeah, coming north, it looks huge, right.
Absolutely. That's because you're on the angle as, as you're going there, and, you know, that's your perception, absolutely, there is a perception.
So from, in my perception, um, I ask myself, does it meet the intent of the zoning for suburban neighborhood fam, single family? And that doesn't seem to fit in that mold to me. It just.
Then Raleigh's Farm doesn't fit the mold. Westminster Village, which is less than twenty yards away, with a parking lot, okay? Doesn't fit the mold. Westminster, uh, tenants who are not supposed to be living there, parking on a lean street all the way up, really.
It's a permanent structure that's, that's eight thousand cubic feet.
Those don't fit the mold.
What the?
Of a, a single family.
They're not in front of us tonight, though. I, I'm, yours, your, your petition is.
So, but again, it's a greenhouse.
Okay. But it's a, it's a twenty-foot-tall seventeen hundred square foot greenhouse.
Seventeen.
Okay. You told me it was three feet above the rafters, so it's twenty feet in actuality.
Okay.
Today, right?
Could be.
So, that's my opinion, those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, I guess now I have a question, Mr. Magnus, based on, um, some of the responses you gave to the other board members. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard, um, you've mentioned you've been talking with the city when the projects first started up, correct?
No, I said I talked to the, as it was going up, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they, they came to me and, and said, hey, you can't put this with.
Okay, so who's, when you say Robert, who's Robert?
Robert Masilia.
Okay. And who's the other gentleman?
Uh, Mark Robisho.
Okay. And I also believe, you said when you were talking to these gentlemen, you said you had drawings that were submitted. Is that correct?
I gave them a plan for the application.
Okay, so, Joe, question I have is, why don't I have the plans in front of me with the application? Were they not submitted at the time of the application?
I mean, I haven't seen any plans in terms of an elevation of the structure, um, so it wasn't submitted with the ZBA application.
So, if there was discussion with DPD as this project was going on and there were, Mr. Magnus saying there's drawings were submitted, plans were submitted, what was actually being submitted to, uh, the city?
Those may have been submitted with the building permit for the greenhouse when, um, it was found by, um, folks in development services and they were going over what the, how the structure was going to be constructed and the earth anchoring that was going to be required. It may have been part of that application process, um, but such elevations weren't submitted as part of the zoning, uh, zoning board appeals application process. So, um, once it was getting more constructed and the walls were being put up, and then a, um, has-built was done, showing that, hey, this actually is within the front yard setback, um, the zoning board application process began. If that helps clarify.
Well, I, I guess, I'm just, I'm just trying to get this framed up correctly, because what I'm hearing is, is that I want to put a greenhouse in, here's, here's what I think my dimensions are. I have some plans or drawings. I'm sitting with city officials, I'm talking about it, and then all of a sudden, here's the finished product, and now we're here for variance. So I'm just trying to understand what was submitted, what were the documentation, what was the timelines? Because something doesn't add up the way I'm looking at it right now. I expect when somebody comes in with an application, that's why I asked, was there anything else Mr. Magnus had to, uh, submit tonight? So when I heard Mr. Magnus mention something about plans and drawings, I guess I'm kind of saying, okay, when was this established? It sounds like it was, uh, October, September last year, two thousand and eleven, so it wasn't like a couple of years ago. I'm just trying to get an understanding of, do we know exactly what the Magnus family was proposing to do? And now we got a finished product and now we're entertaining a variance? If you can just address that, please.
I wasn't involved in the building permit process or how the structure was found or what the discussions were in terms of trying to bring the finished product into compliance with building code and with zoning code. I don't know at which point, whether it was sometime in October or if it was sometime later, as construction continued further, that it was discovered that it was actually too close to, um, the front yard setback, if it didn't, that it didn't comply with that. I don't know which point that was discovered by individuals within development services, whether it be the building commissioner or a local building inspector. Um, at the point that it was discovered, you know, Mr. Magnus was told to, that he either had to bring the structure into compliance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance or that he could file for a variance from these requirements. He elected to file for the variance.
Okay. So you're saying at one, at a certain point, he was given an option?
That's correct.
Okay.
I do have those original drawings for the, um, the greenhouse, if any members would like to see them also with me.
Okay, so that, that's why I'm pretty sure I had asked earlier, because I think you referenced about data elements and information, and I specifically asked that question, that they are, they are required according to eleven point two.
They've already been submitted to the, to, again, to the.
Well, we didn't receive them in our package.
I understand, I'm ignorant of that also, sir. I apologize for that. I would have, I would have come with more than enough copies to, to, uh, give you.
Okay.
Extremely ignorant on that fact. Nobody mentioned it to me.
Yep. Okay. Um, so I'll move on at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I just wanted to extend my best wishes to your significant other, uh, and I wanted to say that I really support, um, organic produce and I really do believe that what we consume affects our health. That being said, I did have some questions. One is, it's, I went to the, the, your property today and saw the greenhouse, and I have to admit, it's, it's massive and it really sticks out, um, when I was just standing, you know, where the sidewalk, or at the street, at a lean street. Because of the size of it, I was just curious, um, what do you plan on doing with the excess produce that you're going to be growing there? Because I'm thinking if it was just for your, your significant other, I, I'm just trying to figure that out.
Well, growing up on a farm, we have a, um, a freezer system in our house. It's about the size of three of these desks here put together, and, uh, my whole life, all we ever did was, uh, was preserve what we grew. Um, we will be, um, taking most of the vegetables that can be kept, uh, the leafy vegetables and things, and blanching them and freezing them for, for use in the, in the winter months. Uh, the tomato sauce, the same way, will be ground and, and saved, so. And again, we have a, uh, I'm quite involved in the, in the community here with, uh, at least four or five different organizations that I'm involved in here, um, and, uh, I do have a extensive network that, uh, everybody will be looking for tomatoes, I can tell you that, at five dollars a, a pound. They'll all be looking for tomatoes, and I have hundreds of seeds that just popped up, um, of organic tomatoes of five different varieties. So, well, uh, it's going to be an interesting, uh, summer.
Okay, thanks. Some comments from the public have shared that the, the greenhouse was used for storage of vehicles. What do you plan, actually, just to hear from you, what has the greenhouse been used for and will be used for when it's not being used for growing?
Well, the only time you don't grow is in the winter months, um, and I do have a boat and a couple of jet skis, um, and, uh, when I, again, spoke with inspectional services and they inspected it, um, they didn't have a problem with me storing them off the property and in the greenhouse in the winter months. Again, I can, they've been sitting outside for ten, twelve years, fifteen years, they can sit outside covered for fifteen more. Uh, it was, uh, it was more of a, um, something I did for the neighbors because, uh, some of them didn't like the fact that I had a boat and a jet ski parked in my side yard and didn't like that look. So, um, to appease them, uh, I put new gravel down and, and put the jet skis and the boat in the, uh, in the greenhouse for the winter months. But, um, as it, as it appears, it looks like they won't be going in anymore. So.
Thank you. Um, I didn't notice on the, the layout here, the dimensions here, that what the height of your existing home is, do you happen to know the height of that?
I don't have the top of my head.
Okay. And do you know the distance between the house and the greenhouse? I know you mentioned eight feet from the pool, but what's the distance?
I don't have, um, I might have that, if you want to, want to look.
Sure. Sure.
It, I think it's ninety feet from the house.
Ninety feet, okay, thank you. Um, you mentioned earlier that you could adjust the height down to sixteen feet, but then I did hear that perhaps the rafters are three feet. I mean, you're up here for a variance, and I think it was clearly stated that with the information we have in front of us, there's just no, I, I feel like we can't, can't, can't grant it based on the, the, I guess, the prerequisites that we need to, um, compare everything to. Um, I think what's coming up for me is that there's a lot of confusion between temporary and permanent building, um, and I don't know if this is a recommendation for the city or for, you know, for us to consider, but maybe we need more specific language and regulations on greenhouse structures, um, within the city. But with what exists now, um, would you, because you've been stating that this greenhouse structure is temporary, that it can be movable, and of course, I understand that since it's already built, it'll be a hardship, would you be willing to bring this structure into compliance and move everything?
Well, again, now we're looking at a major expense to, uh, more gravel for that area. It could, would cost probably, uh, to raise it afoot would cost over probably two to three thousand dollars. That's a ma- that's a major expense. To move the end walls, uh, you know, I'm gonna have to rent a crane for at least a day, um, and the last time I checked, uh, um, any of those services is probably going to be at least a thousand dollars just to drop it off, and, and then so many, so much, uh, an hour for an operator. So, we're talking, now we're talking, um, a, a, a cost-effective project, um, going into, uh, extremely large budget override, as you might call it. I'm a single guy. I work, uh, two jobs to, uh, to maintain my, my family home for my dad and myself, and, uh, um, now, now we're talking a lot of money.
Okay. Um, because of the massive size, would be, would, I was very glad to hear that you were planning to put siding on it, but are you, would you be, would you be, would you be able to screen the actual building out of, from a lean street, and you can also see it on Varnum Street. Perhaps, I, I noticed with your shed, you have a lot of greenery around the shed that hides it. Um, would you be willing to do something like that?
Well, other than the, the roadside of it, which, which need, you need access to, um, I've got every other side of it shaded. I've got, um, my brother's house with, with tree line on one side. On the long side of it, I've left all that foliage, uh, towards a lean street so that, uh, the neighbors can't see it. I personally went to, uh, Mr. McCarthy's, um, fiance's home yesterday and stood up there, and I cannot see the structure from their home, okay? It is not visible. Now, again, um, will it be visible in the winter months? Well, we had it over the winter, and as, and you can ask Mr. Sikowitz, because it's a clear canvas, and because, you know, our, it's, it's dark at four o'clock, and it's snowy and, and, and kinda gray all winter, it really, he, he, he said you really don't even notice it. So, again, I got two different, um, two different opinions. Again, this is, again, this is about opinion here. I have two, two neighbors next door to each other, actually, three, two that say they, you know, they have no problem with it, and they're the major abutters. They're the two that live the closest to it, and say there's no problem with it. They can't see it. It's not bothering. It's not unappealing to them 'cause they literally only see it for, if you've any seen anybody drive down a lean street, they drive down a lean street at, at twenty-five miles an hour, so to go thirty-five feet is a matter of three seconds each way, so for six seconds a day, they see, they see the greenhouse in it. And again, because of your perspective of it, it looks like it's an enormous thing, because, again, it's sitting, sitting next to the tree line. I mean, if the trees were there and that next lot was wide open and I cleared that, that, that would look like an ant on that property. But because I've closed it in, the perception is that it's huge, especially with the green background.
Thank you for responding to my questions. Um, I just wanted to say, I, I personally can't see how we can approve this application as-is without a plot plan and the initial plans that was sent to, I guess, the Building Department, um, based on our work in terms of, uh, comparing the criteria and prerequisites, uh, so that's just my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, most of the questions I had were answered by the, the board, but I do have one question for, uh, the representative from the Pataqueville Citizens and Council, if that's okay?
Sure.
I just, I just want to know, uh, how many people are against this petition? I mean, just a, a raw number, just of how many people, how many family or...
It's, I, it's a good question you're asking, and when you say against, I don't think, it's not the project or Mr. Magnus.
Not the petition, I mean, excuse me.
Well, what we're, in the neighborhood group, the consensus was, and our mission and our purpose is for the neighborhood, and the neighborhood being, if you heard everyone's comments, massive, oversized, and with those comments made, and then encroaching on the zoning issues, if it met all the criteria of zoning, we couldn't be against it. We're against the fact that it's violated the zoning laws. So, what we're asking is, if it's a temporary structure, to move it back the eight feet to meet the, uh, the site, the setback requirements off the street, and also to keep the height requirements. So, I guess what we're saying is, we want to stay within what the city has established as zoning. So, it's not against a neighbor, it's not against a person, it's not against a purpose, um, but that's how the group feels. We didn't take head counts. It's a, we have an executive board, and our mission and our purpose, every time we come to, uh, uh, at this mic, whether it's conservation, zoning, or planning, we just always want you to stay consistent. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's, that's all the question I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I think this, uh, particular petition is rather interesting with all the facts that I've heard presented before us. Um, I'm somewhat troubled with, I guess, I'll call it the process of the building permit and the submission of the plans that we received for the, uh, the project. Um, I've heard the feedback from everybody, what, what happened with the, uh, data, but, you know, I can only go on the elements and the data points that were submitted with this application. And, um, I guess, one thing that really bothers me, if I look at Mr. Magnus, he's, he's been there for what, sixty years, if I have my math right, um, you know, when I, when I see somebody that's lived in Lowell and stayed in the same home for sixty years, that means a lot to me. Um, I found it pretty interesting, your comment about you thought it was somewhat silly to even have to come down here and have to go through this. I, I understand what you're saying. I know it's no disrespect, but, um, but based on, I can only speak as one board member, and based on everything that I've heard tonight, and I've written quite a few notes, and I've heard quite a few things, because obviously, there's people in the neighborhood who are supporting this program, and there's also, uh, there's neighbors that are, uh, against it. There's also the, uh, Pataqueville, uh, Neighborhood Association. They've come here to voice opposition. Uh, they've been before us quite a few times, and I know we've talked a lot about variances and signage and permits, and trying to follow the letter of the law is always very difficult for everybody on this board. But if I, if I really take a hard look at the, the evidence, and if I'm going to reference the variance prerequisites, um, I'm not going to support the, uh, petition, because I don't think I've heard it satisfied that it meets because of the soil conditions, the shape, the t- topography of the land. I think the unfortunate part here is that Mr. Magnus has explained that, you know, the structure's up, uh, you just can't pick it up and move it a few feet without any effort cost. I think that's the real, uh, irony here. Um, but again, I can only go based on what's been submitted before me tonight and what I've listened to, and I also don't think the applicant would meet the other three criterias for granting the variance. So, with that said, is there any other comments from any other board members?
Uh, I, I just have one comment.
Absolutely.
It, it's, it's hard, uh, when the building's built, and so much is invested, and there's been conversations with the city to, um, suggest that it's, it's wrong and needs to change. And I was just wondering if we could, um, suggest that the, uh, DPD and Inspeccial Services, uh, take another go at what's going on here with the definition of temporary building, and see if there's any way of creating a win-win situation here for the city and for the current location with modifications to the structure without, without big expense like, like, uh, moving the building is. I don't know. I'm just suggesting that maybe there's an opportunity for another re- review, especially in light of temporary structures. It's a plastic roof without a foundation. I'm just confused here. I'm not seeing this as permanent. Anyway.
So, do you have any comments to that, Joe?
Again, Mr. Chairman, this was based on the interpretation of the Building Commissioner, and when he looked at his tools and not only our zoning code, but also what is available to him in the state of Massachusetts Building Code, what he can call a temporary structure and what he can call a permanent structure. This did not meet the criteria for a temporary structure under state building code. Um, in terms of other comments about plan materials, the eleven point two point four that talks about elements of the site plan, not necessarily building elevations. That talks about things such as topography lines, the average gradient height. Those are things that are required under section eleven point two point four, but some of those elements were not on the plot plan that were submitted as part of the zoning board application. In terms of other elevations, like I said, I'm not sure if they were submitted with the building permit or not. I haven't seen it. Um, they were not submitted as part of this. It's something the board could require if they so chose.
So, in the zoning book, is there, is there any section that one can reference for temporary structures, Joe?
I believe Mr. McCarthy was referring to four point three point six for temporary building or use. And underneath that, um, it's section four point four, which talks about accessory structures.
Correct. I saw it under the four point four, but I wanted to ask the question, um, if any, any other section would be referenced regarding, uh, so four point three point six is temporary building or use? That's section you're referring to, right?
Correct. That's, under our zoning code, there's other elements in the state building code that talks about temporary structures. Obviously, I, I don't have that in front of me. Um, Building Commissioner would have information about what you can require as a permanent structure or a temporary structure in the building code.
Okay. But in the application, or for tonight, we were just referencing four point four and five point one, correct?
Correct, because this, again, through the Building Commissioner's interpretation, is a permanent structure, which falls under our accessory structures portion of the zoning code.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'd like to, uh, like they have a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, uh, the application at twelve ninety-one Varnum Ave for the variance of both height and front yard setback.
Can I have a second?
Second motion.
Have a roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny.
Mr. Ahern?
Deny.
Ms. Carino?
Deny.
Mr. McCarthy?
Deny.
Mr. Beck?
Approve.
Okay, Ms. Magnus, uh, the petition has been denied, and, um, Joe, is there anything we wanna have Mr. Magnus sign at this point?
Um, I don't think that would be necessary at this point.
Okay, okay. All right, moving on. The next matter before us is under, uh, other business. Uh, these are the minutes of May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. Does any of the, um, members have any, uh, comments regarding the minutes of May fourteenth? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minute from May fourteenth.
And can I have a second?
I'll second that.
A roll call, Joe.
Mr. Bailey?
Approved.
Mr. Ahern?
Approve.
Ms. Carino?
Approve.
Mr. McCarthy?
Approved.
Mr. Beck?
Approve.
Okay, any other, uh, comments, concerns? Okay, hearing none, I make a motion to adjourn. Where adjourn?